Good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting for the city of St. Peter, Minnesota. It is Monday, November 10th, 2025. At 7:03 PM, we are called to order. Would all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have all received a copy of the agenda. Are there any, I believe there is one update to the agenda, which is we're going to pull an item off of the consent agenda and move it to new business. Todd?
So, Madam Mayor, what I'm asking the council to do is remove the item which is located on page 10, which is the noise vehicle signage. As you know, we work hard to ensure that you are approving those types of changes, but it's my understanding through Pete that the county engineer would like to have a separate resolution on that. And so, my hope is, we don't have one prepared for you, but my hope is that you'll give staff some latitude about that. Really, what we'd, and I can cover that a little bit more, but that's the goal of removing it from the consent agenda, to have its own separate resolution.
Okay. Are there any other questions, discussion, revisions to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as revised?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda's approved. Next up, approval of the minutes. The minutes appear on pages five through seven of the packet. Are there any revisions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. We have time on our schedule for visitors' comments. Is there a visitor who'd like to address the council concerning an agenda item? Hearing none, we also have time for general visitor comments. Are there any visitors who'd like to address the council on another matter? Hearing none, we will move on to the approval of the revised consent agenda. The consent agenda begins with a memo on page eight of the packet and concludes with the resolution that appears on page 26. The consent agenda includes a low potency hemp edible license and registration for St. Peter Food Co-op for the dates and location listed within the packet. It includes the following employee appointments: Paige Marquardt, Rowan Mira, Joseph Connor, and Leith Bly as volleyball officials at the wage listed within the packet. We would approve installation, oh, we're removing, we're removing the vehicle installation. We're moving on to approve MWP Recreation of Golden Valley, Minnesota, to furnish and deliver new playground equipment for the improvements at Stones Park in the amount of $17,427. We will cancel the December 15th and December 22nd workshop and council meeting, as well as the schedule of disbursements for October 24th through November 5th, 2025. Is there any discussion of any item on the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. We have no items of unfinished business tonight, so we will move on to our first item of new business, which is a canvas of the 2025 election.
Mayor members, as you know, Keisha and her team conducted elections in cooperation with the school district and certainly Niklet County. And so, it is the law that the council take action related to canvassing. You will note on the resolution that it does include the school board canvassing as well. You will, or may also note that the school board will canvass too. This is really kind of a little bit of a gray area within the law, and since we are managing their election, I think it's appropriate that you canvass the school board election, and they can certainly canvas it as well. The data will be the same. But I want to make sure that we're covering all the bases here. This is the process that you've used for the past many years, more than a couple of decades, related to local odd year elections. The information is included in your packet, and again, I do want to thank Keisha and the teams and all those election judges who really do make all this happen. And so, we want to thank them as a part of this as well. But the resolution is included in your packet, starting on page 28.
All right. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, the resolution canvassing the 2025 municipal election returns is on page 28 of the packet. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. Next up, MinDOT limited use permit for the 99 Trail. Oh, Pete is here to talk to us about that.
Yes, Madam Mayor and City Council, as you're aware, we received grant funding to install a trail on the north ditch of Highway 99 West, running from trunk highway 169 all the way up to Niklet Avenue. Our intentions are to install a trail in the bottom of the ditch along that area there. And in order to do so, we would need to have a limited use permit from MinDOT to construct, maintain, and operate that trail. There would be no other permitted uses of that area along there, since it is MinDOT right-of-way. And it would be our intent to move forward with this, and what we're asking is that the mayor and city administrator be allowed to sign an agreement, asking permission to use MinDOT right-of-way. There's a resolution on page 31, and I'm available for questions.
Thanks. Questions for Pete. Brad?
So Pete, this is in a different location than previously when it was going further up the hill, correct? This will be closer to the road, so further out of yards?
Yeah.
Well, they weren't ever in yards, they were always in the right-of-ways.
Right. It's always been in the right-of-way. We didn't have a route determined, so I wouldn't say that we originally had it up on top. We've never really had it located there. We had to do the evaluation of where it would be best fit to control cost, and so that was determined to be in the lower portion of the ditch.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
If I can, Madam Mayor. So Pete, we are planning to have a session for neighbors to be able to see what's going to happen, to ensure that they have an opportunity to know and understand what's going on.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Hearing, no further discussion of resolution authorizing entering into an agreement with MinDOT for a limited use permit for a non-motorized trail adjacent to trunk highway number 99 is on page 31 of the packet. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
The resolution is approved, and Pete's staying put for our next item of new business, which is update to 2026 tree planting lists.
Madam Mayor and City Council, as you know, we come to you periodically with a request to update our tree planting list. We're really concerned about two different locations. One is in city right-of-way, and two would be in parks and green spaces. Each of these areas are treated a little differently according to the rules and regulations that we have governing those areas. In our right-of-way, we try to use trees that provide a larger canopy to cool our streets down. It's kind of a stormwater-related issue. And also, there's limited space in right-of-way, so we're looking at root growth and how the tree would grow and benefit the neighboring property owners. In parks, we allow for a wider root base, a little, I wouldn't say wilder tree, but a tree that probably has the opportunity to grow in different directions, not only vertically but horizontally in some cases, with a wider root base and can be more decorative. And so, our intent is, since we have kind of worked our way into zone five, is to update that, to reflect the authorized trees that can be planted in zone five. We did have about, I'd say about eight to 10 trees that we did modify. Some went from just describing a regular tree, like a ginkgo, and then we may have required that it be fruitless or seedless, depending on what's going on there and the mess it makes and what it does to neighboring properties. So, a lot of these are just pinpointing certain types of trees to increase our diversity and provide for the community to have decent-looking canopies. There is a resolution on pages 34 through 36 and pages 37 through 39 that completes this improvement.
Okay. Anything to add?
Just to mention again, there are two resolutions. One is for trees in the right-of-way, and the other is for within green spaces and parks.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, the first resolution approving the right-of-way tree planting list is on page 34 through 36 of the packet. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
The resolution is approved.
Thank you.
The next resolution approving the parks and green spaces tree planting list, that resolution appears on page 37 through 39 of the packet. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. I'll just take a second to note that these resolutions or the tree lists are reviewed by our tree advisory board, which includes members of the public. So if people are watching this at home on YouTube and you're not serving on a board or commission of the city, think about doing it. It's a great opportunity to serve your community. You'll learn a lot, and it's just a great experience. I recommend it. We will move on to next item of new business, winter no maintenance trail designations.
Madam Mayor and City Council, we come to you every couple of years and ask you to approve a list of trails and sidewalks that primarily are not used during inclement weather. And what that does for us is, on this list here, we do not maintain that. So, an example would be up on County Road 20. We have an area of trail there that blows in quite frequently. If we were to try to maintain that area, it would be very costly to do so. We do maintain, and most of these areas are one side or the other related to trail or sidewalk. We usually do not close down both sides for any reason. We'll have one side open and then try to maintain those. No major changes this year, it's just a timing thing, coming back and making sure that people are aware that we're going to close some of the facilities down when winter provides. Remember, if we do have light snows and it looks promising from time to time, we will keep them open as long as we can. But usually in January and February, what we end up with is some big events, and then it becomes pretty difficult. There's a resolution on page 44 that covers these activities. There's really no cost to approve this. There is a cost savings, depending on how much snow we receive. And as you know, we've gone anywhere from 25 inches to 85 inches the last few years here, so it's hard to give you a number on what that would be for a savings.
Any questions or discussion? All right. Hearing nothing, the resolution establishing no winter maintenance trails and sidewalks for the winters of 2026, '27 through '27, '28 appears on pages 44 and 45 of the packet. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
The resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Next up, order preparation of assessment for non-right-of-way work and unpaid miscellaneous charges and call for a public hearing.
Mayor members, this is an item that you see on a regular basis annually, generally this time of year. There are two resolutions for your consideration. Perry is not here today, so I'm covering this one. Again, as the subject outlines, this is for assessments for non-right-of-way work and miscellaneous charges. And so, you can see there are four lawn mowing charges and 24 snow removal charges and so on as a part of this. It's appropriate to call it at this time, call for the preparation of the assessment roll and for the hearing. Notice then is provided to the impacted property owners or those that would be billed, and they'd have opportunity to attend your meeting to contest this. This hearing is requested for your next regular city council meeting on the 24th. The first resolution within your packet, which is after the roll or the assessment list, is located on page 48. And again, I'm happy to answer questions. Again, this resolution is for the declaring unpaid and for the assessment. The next resolution is calling for the hearing.
Any questions about either of the resolutions? Hearing none, the first one will be a resolution declaring unpaid miscellaneous charges to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessment. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. The second resolution, calling for a public hearing on assessment of miscellaneous charges, is on page 49. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. Next up, order of preparation of assessment for delinquent utility accounts and call for a public hearing. So again, we'll have two resolutions with this one.
That's correct, Madam Mayor. This information starts on page 50, and I do want to bring your attention to page 50 because it does show the past or the history of delinquent accounts from 2008 through 2004. I should mention that this really runs until May of 2025, so this would not be for any utility accounts after May of 2025. You might wonder why that is. Well, our general process is, and so we try and keep this on a regular, occurring basis, and that's the date that makes the most sense from an assessment standpoint. These are for assessable amounts for folks, whether it's property owners or renters, that have not paid their utility bill. And so, this is a mixture of households and other commercial uses, whether it's retail businesses or industrial or whomever. You might note that we see an increase in the '24 and '25 year over previous years. The number that we will be assessing remains very, very low relative to the total revenue stream that you have in place. And so, it's also true that one or two delinquencies can make this trend line look very different very quickly for a few thousand dollars because the number is so low. So, please take that in consideration as a part of that. We do go into some explanation about how we provide for collection of these, and this is really the last stop for an opportunity to collect these. Again, there are two resolutions within your packet, the first of which is the assessment roll, preparation of the assessment roll, and ordering these to be assessed, and the second is calling the hearing, again, which would be on November 24th.
All right. Questions for Todd? All right. The first resolution declaring unpaid charges for municipal utilities to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessment is on page 53. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. The next resolution, calling for a public hearing declaring unpaid charges for municipal utilities to be assessed, is on page 54 of the packet. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. Next up, donations acceptance.
Mayor members, I do want to mention this one is a little bit unique and a little bit out of process because of the timeline and with these two very nice gifts being primarily for Gorman Park and the enhancements. Well, again, you had an event on Friday, I'm sure some of you will talk about that in the report, so wanted to move this along, and it's a little bit out of order. It is appropriate, based on your donation policy, that you do take action. Typically, we have the Parks Board review this, but based on the timeline, it just didn't work out that way. And I would suggest that the Park Board does review, and if they have any concerns, to move those forward. The donation of this is cash, and so it's easy to use, you're not having to figure out whether there's going to be additional maintenance on somebody gifting you a 1974 F-150 pickup or anything like that, right? And so, we do want to make sure that we're following the process, but I wanted to be transparent about how this works and how this fits together. You do have two separate resolutions for these donations. The first one is from Barb Graham's in honor of Stephen and Barb, and they provided $25,000 towards Gorman Park. That's the first resolution. The second is a generous resolution or gift from the Redman Club, providing $40,000, 30 of which would go to Gorman Park, and 10 of which would go to the Police Department for equipment at the new city hall, exercise equipment at the new city hall, when that comes to fruition. I'm happy to answer questions as best I can and try and make sure that the timing on everything works out better in the future, but these are fantastically generous gifts, very kind. I know that the Redmen indicated, Ed Johnson, the manager there, indicated that they really wanted to invest in kids and families and in the health of police officers within our community. And Barb wanted me to make sure that I mentioned how important the park was to Steve, and he loved to be in there with his grandkids and loved to be able to sit out on their patio and watch all the activities with kids and families, and certainly that will only be enhanced by the new park that you've made happen there. So, anyway, that's the basis for those gifts.
Yeah. It was great to, at the ribbon cutting for Gorman Park, to be able to thank some of these people in person. So, Brad?
I just want to make some comments about particularly the Graham's donation. Three of us served with Steve while he was on city council. Number one, really funny guy. But one thing Steve, one thing I always remember him saying is, you know, everybody's going to be disabled eventually, it's just a matter of when. But that didn't stop him from doing stuff, but also being an advocate for accessibility. I think it's so appropriate and so great to see them making this donation. And so much of this park, we looked at the accessibility part of it, and I think it's a great way, you know, to honor Steve and Barb, his partner in crime, partner in life. So I'm just really excited about that, so.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm sure that the Park and Rec Advisory Board will be just fine with stepping over a procedural hoop to take a donation of this size.
Yeah. All right. The first resolution, accepting a donation from Barb Graham's, is on page 57. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. Next resolution, accepting a donation from the Redman Club of St. Peter, is on page 58. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Oh, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. Last item of new business tonight is approve the installation of vehicle noise law enforcement signage on Casoff 5 and Broadway. And Pete's back up to talk to us about that.
Thank you so much for pulling this out and making my life easier to try to get these signs and stuff. We've been working with some concerned citizens along this route to try to accommodate some of the noise requirements in this area. We've worked with Niklet County to sign some of their roadway, since they own Broadway Avenue or County State Aid Highway 5 from Sunrise Drive to the west, past the high school to city limits. And in order to get signs put up there, we would have to agree, the city council would have to agree to allow our law enforcement to enforce the intent of that. The language basically is reflected in about the fifth bullet down here, to enforce Minnesota Statute Section 169.69 related to muffler use, and Minnesota Statute 169.693 motor vehicle noise limits. Basically, what's happening is, there's three areas when you come into St. Peter from the west on County Road 5 where this is an issue. The first one is in the rural section of town, coming into the roundabout. The other is when they get to the top of the Broadway Hill and realize that there's a controlled intersection down there by the new fire hall. You hear that constantly, and I think the mayor was at a meeting at the fire hall, and all we heard for about 45 minutes was the Jake Brake coming through there with all the grain that was being hauled and everything else that was being trucked through there. And the second, and the third area is, once you start past the roundabout heading to the east, going down the hill by the middle school. They just start to pick up activity, they realize there's a sharp hill with a controlled intersection down at Washington, and they use their Jake Brake quite a bit, which is basically using their engine to try to control their speed and/or get a reduction in their vehicle. And so, what we're asking you tonight is to approve the installation of two signs. One would be in the county road section. That's to be determined yet. The county likes to put it out in advance so that truckers are well aware that this is up here, that we are going to enforce this as they come into town. The other would be what I call east of the Sunrise and Broadway intersection, so that when people get near the middle school and the residential areas on both sides there, they're encouraged not to use that Jake Brake. And we have talked this over with our local law enforcement, and they're aware of the situation.
That was going to be my next question, because if we have an enforcement signed up, but nobody's notified, the chief, probably not going to work very well.
Right. He's aware, we've had some discussions, and so we'd ask you to give us some leeway to approve a resolution, or to you to approve the resolution that would identify those bullets that are contained in the memo.
Okay. Any questions for Pete? Carrie?
Yeah, this just reminds me of the concerned residents along Highway 169. I know it's a different process. You know, this is a county road, it's probably a lot easier and safer for law enforcement to enforce. I am in support of this, but it does make me think about the residents who have campaigned I am in support of this, but it does make me think about the residents who have campaigned for a long time to have a similar signage. And is there any update on, on that as an option? Do you still hear folks complaining about it? I, I can tell you that I, you know, since being made aware of it, I hear it all the time.
Right.
Still, and...
We have, we have talked with MinDOT about that process there, and we know what the cost would be. And so during the process of the change in that area, where we've heard it mostly is coming from the north into town, where the higher speed is, is really closer to St. Peter than on the south end, with less residents on the south end. And the north end there, they're coming in at fifty-five, and then they're going to slow down to forty-five. The flashing sign has helped quite a bit, not only with speed reduction, but with noise reduction. So we're hoping that with the median changes that'll come up in the future project, that they'll be get used, they'll get used to driving at a slower speed and not have a need for signs to be installed. But we can, if, if they continue, and we would address that situation.
I, I appreciate the explanation. It just makes me think about those folks that might see that this is happening and wonder, well, where is our sign? But I, I think with the improvements, it's worth seeing that process through and... But my second question was, do, do we still hear from residents about that?
Um, not as much. We're trying to do things to control the speed, which again, impact the effect of that Jake Brake. So if we can get them to slow down a little bit outside of town, there isn't the need to get to the Dairy Queen or Union Street intersection and then hit that Jake Brake.
Thank you. Additional questions? All right, hearing nothing further, we are being asked to approve a resolution installing of, for installation of vehicle noise law enforcement signage on Cassafive and Broadway. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Scharstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. Thank you, Pete.
And I would mention, Madam Mayor, the noise that maybe you all heard. I, my guess is that was a helicopter heading towards the hospital. So this would not affect helicopter traffic.
All right, we have concluded our new business. We'll move on to reports. I just wanted to, and I'll let others chime in as well, like to thank everybody who participated in the ribbon cutting at Gorman Park last week.